Good morning, everyone. Called on our board of county commissioners meeting for September eighth.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson. Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic of America. And to the republic which is ours. One next. This is a little. Like our invitation today will be led by Pastor Dakota.
Morning.
Am I okay on the mic?
I believe so, yeah.
All right. Hey, I appreciate your welcoming of me here again this morning. Ottawa Bible appreciates it as well. There are two truths to the Christian faith that I just want to speak about if I had one minute to share to encourage you all. The first truth is that we all have a need for God, and the second truth is that we all have access to God. Romans three, verse twenty-three says, "For all have sinned and fall short of the glory of God." That would be our desperation for Him because we have sinned. But verse twenty-four brings the good news, "But we have also been justified." The word in the Greek is dedekaiomai, which is a legal term, meaning to be declared innocent. But we have been declared innocent as a gift by His grace through the redemption or the repurchasing, which is in Christ Jesus. So the truths of the Christian faith is that although we have a desperation for God and Jesus, we can be declared innocent because of His great love for us. And then He follows up with that with a great relationship with us. So I want to encourage you men, you know, we live, and you women, we live in this country where we have this freedom of religion and freedom of speech, but we still live in perilous times and in a broken world. And for the Christian, the number-one hope of the heart, the number-one assurance that we have is that the love of God is present and available in Jesus Christ. And that's something that no Christian can ever hold back from declaring. So I want to encourage you in the midst of your efforts here in the community to just pray for the community, but also to know that the love of God is accessible to you as well. So I'd like to begin with prayer and then continue on with the meeting. Father, I thank you so much for the riches of Your grace in Christ Jesus. I thank you that in spite of us, in spite of our shortcomings and our failures, that You have not left us without Your Son. I thank you that through Your Son, we can be declared legally completely innocent before You, and that Your love for us is greater than we would ever know. It's not just some ethereal idea, but Your love for us is an experience that is accessible to us at all times. I thank you for the Franklin County Commissioner's office. I thank you for this team. I thank you for everyone here today, and I pray that they would know that they are loved by You, and our community would know the same. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you all for today.
Thanks for coming. Do you want to have any public comment today?
No.
All right. Our consent agenda would be the minutes from our meeting on the first of September. Anyone care to make a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. First five items of business are with the planning and zoning, planning and building department. Looks like we have a rezoning application up. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you doing? Do you know, I'm sorry, we have a lot.
Yeah, that's all right.
Which case was it that was first?
Yeah, the first one is Ferris.
Okay. I got my, all my stuff out of order and.
Last four numbers are eighteen ninety-seven.
So this was a rezoning request to rezone a five-acre tract. I believe this one was down sort of in the southeast corner of the county. The Planning Commission did hold the public hearing on August nineteenth to consider the rezoning application. And after the staff presentation, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the rezoning request from the A-1 district to the RE district. There were no comments against or I think even for that application. And probably the one thing I would just note, I think we have started maybe changing things up just a little bit from I think what you've seen in the packet before. Before, I think you just got sort of a resolution that just sort of gave sort of broadly what occurred. What we, I think, are doing now is attaching a copy of the original staff report in the minutes so that hopefully you guys can have a little better idea of what happened if you would like to look a little bit further. So hopefully that'll provide a little bit more information to you.
Oh, yeah, this one's way down there, even southeast of Lane.
Yep.
And I would also point out, and Kenny does a fantastic job with his staff reports, and we've talked about this a couple of times now, and we're going to continue having this discussion, but he has expressed some reservation, and certainly I agree with it about just our continued rezoning of these individual tracts of land. We're trying to transition Kenny in and get his feet under him, and then we want to have a bigger discussion with the five of you just philosophically about what we're hoping to accomplish via zoning. But this is another one of those examples of, you know, postage stamp zoning or spot zoning, and it's something we've historically done, but there are some pitfalls to that. This is an application that, in my understanding, started under Larry Walrod, and so certainly we, but just please consider that as we move forward, that's a discussion that we're going to want to have just about what the future of the county looks like because.
Well, the state. Oh, sorry.
Well, with every one of these we do, we're, you know, that's agricultural land that we're potentially breaking up, and that's just, we have to balance development on the one hand with preservation of agriculture on the other.
That's what I was going to say. I believe the stated vision or goal of our zoning is to preserve the agricultural nature of the county, something along those lines, so.
And we still have a desire to provide some housing, but I think, you know, there's some things, again philosophically, just that we need to talk about and figure out to sort of what extent and, you know, how many times will we allow property to be split and to what size and those types of things, so.
We didn't used to do two or three of these a week, so we're moving pretty quick and cutting things up, and it can't undo it, so.
And to be clear, the five of you will guide that discussion. I mean, you set those policies, but I just, I think, with as much development as we're potentially going to see here as the city continues to come down this way, I just think it's a discussion that we're going to have probably sooner rather than later, so.
The community wants the whole county cut up into five-acre tracts, maybe then we keep going this way, but, yeah, I agree, we need to, at the clip we're moving, we need to make sure we're sticking with our principles.
Yep.
All right. This Ferris rezoning application's in front of us. It's the five acres. They're splitting off a larger parcel, parcel. Any questions? One is pretty straightforward. It's rezoning application twenty-one oh seven dash eighteen ninety-seven. Anyone care to approve it?
I might have a motion to approve it.
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Next rezoning application is Wood, eighteen ninety-nine.
This application was part of a request. The applicant is desiring, well, he has a twenty-eight acre tract right now. One of his neighbors is actually wanting to buy a small acreage from him on sort of the west side. The neighbor who owns property adjacent over there, there's no great access to his property because of floodplain and some other things. And so I think the desire was is to allow somebody that he knows for a while to be able to build a house site sort of near where their agricultural land is. So they are proposing to split this twenty-eight acre parcel into two tracts, and because it's only twenty-eight acres, both parcels will end up being less than twenty acres, and so the whole property does need to be rezoned to the RE district. I would note on this application, the western tract did have a little bit of floodplain based off of our current flood insurance rate maps. As I think you guys are aware, we are in the process of FEMA updating our floodplain maps, so that western property actually was significantly more impacted by the new flood maps. There is still sufficient space for them to be able, I think, build a house and get the sanitation system on it, but it was just sort of one of those ones that, as we were reviewing, it sort of surprised us a little bit with the expansion of that. But the Planning Commission did hold the public hearing on August nineteen, twenty-twenty-one, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the rezoning application to rezone approximately twenty-eight acres from the A-2 to the RE district. And again, there were no comments presented in response to this request. And probably sort of the same thing that Mr. Brown presented sort of was in all of these items. I did put a little bit of information forward to the Planning Commission of just, hey, you know, we're going to need to have discussions on this in the future to see what direction we want to go, so.
Questions, comments, any?
Rezoning application twenty-one oh seven dash eighteen ninety-nine.
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Third one is rezoning application nineteen hundred, legacy ag.
Okay. This request was an existing forty-acre tract, so sort of quarter-quarter that the individuals were wanting to split into two tracts. The northern portion of the tract did have a little bit of floodplain along the northern part and is somewhat heavily wooded, probably maybe fifty percent, probably not quite that much of the property. Their desire was to keep the southern track, to continue to use it for agricultural purposes, but I think with the area in the north, it wasn't really usable from an agricultural purpose. They were looking at, I think, selling it to somebody for a dwelling site. That will, splitting a forty-acre takes it down to two-twenty, so the rezoning request is to rezone the entire property to the A-2 Transitional Agriculture District. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on August nineteenth and did make a recommendation of approval of the rezoning application to rezone the forty acres from the A-1 to the A-2 Agricultural Transition District. Again, there were no individuals at the meeting to make comments, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
This one's on Joan Brown, just outside of Princeton.
Yep.
I might have a question.
Sure.
There sounds like a couple of drainages just crossing to the north, to the floodplain area.
Uh-huh.
Well, they rezoned this, chances are the chairman helped pay for those improvements on the agriculture land. Does the government have to hold the new owner responsible if they want to change any of that kind of stuff?
Um, I, I do not know.
Sometimes they do something like that, and the new owner doesn't want that water draining off and off across their property, then they dam it up or do something else like that.
What I could definitely say, because some of the northern portions of the side are in the floodplain, for them to do any kind of project, they're going to have to get a floodplain development permit. It might also require a state floodplain fill permit, depending on what they're doing. And then as part of that application, they do have to typically, you know, sort of verify that they are in compliance with federal and other state requirements and permits that might be required. And so what would probably happen is if they did have to submit an application for a floodplain development permit because they wanted to change something, it would hopefully get caught in that review process that there's some, I mean, usually if there is some kind of restriction, there would probably be some kind of document filed at the Register of Deeds, because otherwise, nobody's going to know when they purchase the property that there's some type of restriction, but.
Okay.
So.
It'll be something you'd have to disclose as well if you're selling a parcel that has restrictions here.
Yep, yep.
Right, well, this is rezoning application twenty-one oh seven dash nineteen hundred.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Fourth item is to consider reappointing a member to the county's Planning Commission.
So I think is, the board is aware, I think the terms are sort of ending on the three planning commissioners that their three-year term is up this year. Two of those individuals have sort of expressed, well, one is termed out, so can't get reappointed, and that was Kristen Campbell, James Pickett, who I think has served a number of years as well, has expressed that I think he's enjoyed being on the Planning Commission, but just isn't able to continue. So he's stepping back, I think, from that. And then Linda Spencer is the other individual that term is expiring but does have another term available. She has expressed her interest in continuing to serve if the Board of County Commissioners would desire her to continue to serve. Staff definitely recommends to, I think, continue to have her on the Planning Commission, and we are sort of in the process of starting to look for replacements to the other two positions to see if we can find additional individuals willing to serve Franklin County.
And certainly, both Jim Pickett and Linda have been fantastic planning commissioners, and it's hard to lose them, but certainly understand. Sent all of you an email, just soliciting names if you know of anyone that may be willing to serve. I think keeping Chris Campbell on is a no-brainer, and then kind of as Kenny and I have both touched on today, the next couple of years could be pretty, I mean, everything is important, but we could be looking at, you know, our planning philosophy. We could be looking at major amendments to our comp plan or, and so it's a pretty important time, really, in kind of Franklin County's history from a planning and development standpoint. So you might give some thought to people that you'd like to serve on the Planning Commission, because I think they'll be pretty busy.
Yep.
We have traditionally tried to keep our people from certain areas, so are we looking at a particular area?
Um.
Do you know where they?
I do not know where they.
You can find out.
Yeah, I can look and see.
Yeah, we can put the current planning commissioners, we can dot them on a map and get that to you so that we can all look at. This is not something that has to be done today. I think we need to get a motion to reappoint Chris Campbell, but beyond that, we can bring you more information regarding the locations, so.
You're mentioning the fact that we try to be real cognizant about making sure the entire people from all over the county are selected to represent each portion of the county.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to pre- Chris, for reappointment.
All right.
Second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. And the fifth item is to consider purchasing a replacement vehicle for your department.
And I would also just mention, I do have some letters of appreciation for board to sign, thanking those guys for their service, so that'll be another item. So I have been working with Pat in regards to the replacement vehicle for, that he will use, and he's done all of this research. So he actually went out and talked with a number of the different dealerships. Some of the dealerships just sort of told him, we just, we can't even quote because of all of the shortages right now. So he did actually go out and tried to get more than the three that were shown, but some of them just were, just no. So we had three options. One that was a Ford Ranger for just under thirty thousand, Ford Explorer for thirty-two thousand, and a Chevy Equinox at thirty-two thousand eight hundred. And I think what Pat looked at was sort of a mixture between the current price of the vehicle and also sort of more the long-term costs in regards to fuel mileage and costs associated with the vehicle. And of course, I think the other main item that he was concerned with is that he's out on job sites that sometimes the access isn't extremely great when he's out there. And so the need for four-wheel drive is something that I think he felt was a necessity for the vehicle that he uses. And so sort of looking at all of those items, the, you know, all the, I think Equinox did have better gas mileage. It's only an all-wheel-drive vehicle, so for access to sites probably isn't that great. I think my other understanding was, I think, we were also told due to the chip shortage, we were probably going to be waiting at least six months, if not a year, to possibly get that. So possibly twenty twenty-two sometime, twenty twenty-three, before that vehicle would even be ready. I think altogether, we are recommending the Ford Explorer based off of price and also the long-term costs with fuel mileage being a little bit better. It also provides the opportunity that tools or equipment that he might use, he can actually put in the back and not have to store outside or have to do a topper or those types of things. So our recommendation is, for the purchase of the Ford Explorer, I would be more than happy to go into more detail if you guys have any questions or would like us to.
You did a great job here of explaining his rationale or whoever wrote, put this together.
The cover sheet speaks for itself, obviously, but for members of the public, the Explorer's also one of Ford's standard fleet vehicles. That makes maintenance on an Explorer a lot cheaper than it would be a Ranger. Rangers haven't been back in Ford's lineup for very long, so we believe it'd be cheaper maintenance. The clearance on the Explorer, we believe, to be better. We do have on here, and Janet, you can slap me on the wrist if I'm wrong, but we've got that this will be paid out of the capital equipment fund. I assume we'll pay it out of capital outlay, actually, which is what we normally, but our capital outlay fund can sustain this. And so wholeheartedly endorse planning's request for this Explorer.
And he's in a pickup right now. He's not asking to replace the pickup, which would be more expensive to run and purchase.
Yep.
I think this is very much in line of what we thought you were going to come at us with.
Okay.
As far as price-wise, when we approved you to look for it, so, yeah, absolutely.
All right. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the purchase of the twenty twenty-two Ford Explorer from Laird Knoll in the amount of thirty-one thousand nine twenty-nine.
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before you move, Kenny, you did send us that email about, you know, and I didn't realize, I didn't at the time, that two of those people that are both leaving are from my district.
Yeah.
And I know it ain't set in stone, but we've always tried to kind of, you know, keep it spread around the county. And I did contact one gentleman, and you should be getting a letter from him this week sometime.
Okay. That sounds great.
From that, from my district.
Okay.
Our sixth item will be considering an agreement with KDOT to complete a local road safety plan.
Good morning, commissioners. So this local road safety plan, we applied for this back in December of last year, and KDOT has just now finished the negotiations with the consultant to do this work. There's twenty other counties that are participating this time around, and we're one of those. So the local road safety plan has several objectives, three to be precise. I'll read those right quick. Objective one is to select safety emphasis areas by identifying the types of crashes that offer the greatest opportunity for crash reduction. Number two, identify a short list of countermeasures most appropriate for the study routes based on strategies that have been demonstrated to effectively reduce the identified priority crash types. And lastly, identify the intersection segments and/or curves that are highest priority candidates for safety investment in a prioritized manner by route and location, including information sufficient to apply for safety funding. So essentially, what they're going to do is they are going to identify safety issues on approximately two-hundred-and-forty miles of county road. These are our FAS routes. They're not all paved surfaces, but they are generally considered our highest traffic count roads. And so they're going to analyze crash data that's being provided by KDOT. They're going to look at GIS-related information and other maps and so forth, and then they will also do a site visit. They will drive all of the roads and look for existing safety measures, if we've got signs identifying curves and intersections and those sorts of things. And then they will come back with, you know, they'll have a list of countermeasures that we can do, along with rough estimates. They will provide a safety workshop that we will all get to participate in, other stakeholders and whatnot. And then they will identify a top-ten list of the most important sites with strategies to handle these, along with the basic estimates, and enough information that we can apply, take that information and apply for funding through the high-risk rural roads or highway improvement plan funding. These are where we really need to get to, to be able to secure funding for some of these projects. Old Fifty is a prime example of something that would, I have no doubts, would be eligible for this high-risk rural road funding. So this is the first step. This project's going to take about a year to complete. With KDOT paying ninety percent of the cost, the total project cost is just over fifty-two thousand dollars. Our cost is just over fifty-two hundred bucks. So it's a worthwhile investment, really give us some quality information on our road system, on our most heavily-traveled roads, and opens up the possibility for funding down the road. So I would recommend moving forward with this. We've got an agreement here that we'll need to, that we'd like your approval to sign so that we can submit that and get that ball rolling.
David, what would you say, so we're going to spend fifty-two hundred dollars to do this, but would you agree with the statement that doing this makes it substantially likely that we end up getting back far more than fifty-two hundred dollars in funds from the...
Without a doubt.
Yeah.
Without a doubt. The return on this investment is going to be very, very significant.
Yeah.
And really, having those additional funding sources is going to be very key for us as we look to make improvements to our road systems.
We definitely hope it pays off as an investment, but you know, whenever we look at putting dollars towards roads, I would say that use is probably one of the big things we look at, and that's fairly easy to quantify. Life of the structure, especially with the bridge, is easy because we have engineers' reports, and then safety's a big factor, but it's hard to quantify safety too often. We just kind of go by feel, but this is a way to quantify safety.
Exactly.
As well, so it'd be good information regardless.
Yes, sir.
I feel like every, you know, you talk about just our philosophy, our general philosophy in Franklin County. We try to do everything that we can to alleviate the burden on Franklin County. We, we try to do everything that we can to alleviate the burden on Franklin County taxpayers. Like, this is, we, we think about how we use our stimulus funds, how we use the CARES Act, how we're going to use the ARPA funds, and, and this is another way to leverage funds from outside of Franklin County so that our citizens don't have to pay as much. And so, I, I wholeheartedly endorse this. I think it's a great program that I'm anxious to get involved with.
Questions, comments? What we would be looking for on this is a motion to approve the agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation to complete a local road safety plan for Franklin County.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Wayne Meyer?
Yes. We're on to staff reports, Derek.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would have is just a reminder that we have our, our budget hearing tonight, and, and we are not going to be revenue-neutral, and that's something, you know, you all have known that for a couple of months now. And, and we'll talk about this later as well, but I, I had Janet run some numbers for me yesterday, and these are numbers that we've discussed publicly on more than one occasion, but we're only going up about a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. So, that's not revenue-neutral, but it's a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. That represents, if you look at our total budget, so a roughly thirty-million-dollar budget, that is a half a percent increase. If you look at just our levied funds, which is about seventeen million, that's about a one-point-one percent increase. So, either lens that you view that through, you're looking at an either a half percent increase or a one-point-one percent increase. I could bring every one of my department heads in here. I could start with David Lee. We have all experienced the cost of people, the cost of goods, the cost of services has all went up far more than one-point-one percent or half a percent, as the case may be. And so, we are doing more with less, even though we're coming up a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars, we are asking our people to do more with less, and we're doing it. We're providing good services. Just want to make sure that all of you, as well as the public, has that perspective. Our mill levy, so the rate at which we tax, the budget we're going to present tonight, has it coming down three mills, and that will put us down about five mills in five years. So, our mill levy's trending in the right direction. From a staffing standpoint, we've actually shrank, like, we've gotten rid of positions, and so, I, I struggle to find a metric by which we haven't been responsible with taxpayer dollars. So, would just ask you, if you have any questions, either now or later, please ask them. And we've went through every line of that budget with the five of you, but Janet and I would both tell you, like, we like talking about the budget, so any questions about it, please ask, but, but that'll be tonight at six o'clock, right, Janet? And that's all I have. Cool.
All right. If we're not revenue, I guess a lot of places aren't going to be revenue-neutral, is there some sort of penalty or something like that, or?
The only, the only penalty is you have to send, and Janet could probably discuss the details of this better, you just have to send what's called a truth and taxation notice out to everyone, all of your taxpayers, and that is the quote-unquote penalty.
That's what you do.
And, and we've done that, but as, as you said, Roy, very few entities are truly staying revenue-neutral because that...
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think there are some, but not...
I would just, I would just tell you, Roy, so this year, the truth and taxation notification that goes out to every taxpayer who's, who's taxing entities are not going to be revenue-neutral was suspended this year just because of the really short timeline. You know, they approved this in, in the legislative session this year, and there wasn't enough time between when it was approved and when it was, we would have needed to send out the notification for our vendors to get that set up in our software system. So, the requirements this year were to publish it in the paper, which we've done, publish it in, on our website, which we have done, and then we've tried to go above and beyond that, and just, we've posted it on our Facebook page. We have went and discussed this with KOFO. So, we're, we're trying to get this out there, and you're right, there are many that are not, that are not revenue-neutral this, this year, including a lot of our cemetery districts because, as Derek talked about, inflation and costs going up in general, our, even our cemetery districts are really seeing that with, you know, cost of, a cost of labor to get people out there to mow and to, you know, do all these other things that, that they need to have done, so.
Now, the only other thing I would add, and again, well, I apologize for being redundant because you've heard this, and you'll hear it again tonight, but that a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollar increase, that is all paid for via new improvements to this community. So, we've had enough in new construction that the revenue from that will cover that increase. So, for existing taxpayers, practically speaking, there, there's no increase, like, our growth has covered it. And so, that's kind of one of the unfortunate downsides to the new legislation is, even though that's the case, we're still technically not revenue-neutral, so we have to, to jump through these hoops, but, but we know that we have this new value coming on, and we know that it's more than a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. And so, that's all I have. Thank you.
Casey?
Okay. Just a quick COVID update. The Health Department has been super crazy with calls yesterday. They had over a hundred-and-twenty-five COVID calls yesterday, just yesterday, about people asking about testing and trying to get in to get tested. Our trailer is busy all day long. OFP also tests out of our trailer, and that line is there pretty much all day. So, our schools, Central Heights and Wellsville, have both started the, the testing program, and that seems to be going fairly well for them. As of last night, we had a hundred-and-thirteen active cases in the community, and I know Dr. Ransum told us on a call yesterday that he had admitted five people to the hospital in one day that he was hospitalized. So, he was feeling like he thought we were moving in the right direction, and then when he was working at the hospital, felt the complete opposite, so.
Five people with COVID?
Yes, sorry. Five COVID patients. We partnered on a postcard with Advent Health Ottawa, and that is hitting mailboxes, should start hitting mailboxes today, but he said it'll take a couple of days to get to everybody, and we sent that to every mailbox in Franklin County. And then, Advent Health Ottawa is also doing a live question-and-answer session tomorrow that they wanted, want people to know about. So, it's on Facebook, it's live at 1:00 PM, and you can send in questions. If you check their Facebook page, we'll, we'll share it on ours as well. People can comment and get their questions answered by physicians from Advent Health Ottawa, so. And then, other than that, I was just going to mention the car show being this weekend, the tractor show. The visitor center provided welcome bags for all of the tractor show attendee, or people that bring their tractors.
Participants.
Participants, thank you. I can't think this morning. Also, at the visitor center, we have started repainting the conference room and the hallway to the bathrooms, and I was out there yesterday with Amy for a meeting, and the, the hallway is done, and it looks fantastic, so I'm really excited about that. So, any questions for me?
No questions, but almost every day I hear stories of people that say, oh, I'm finally getting my shot because somebody I know died, or my child got it and they were really sick and I didn't want to see that again, and, yeah, I just wish people would figure it out before something like that happens.
What's the recommendation for vendors that provide product at these events? Are they required to prepackage them, or if you want a hot dog, they just give you a hot dog, or?
Yeah, I mean, there's safe, the health guidelines that they should be following anyways, wearing, they should all be wearing masks and gloves, not handling the money with the same gloves that they're handling food with. I mean, those are all just general guidelines, but we recommend that they wear masks when they're serving food to people, but other than that, there's, the state put out some guidelines for, like, concession stands last summer that we've shared with all of those, so.
Okay.
And we'll be working with the vendors to try and make the event as safe as possible, but at the end of the day, I mean, we've only got so many personnel, like, there's going to have to be some honor system components to it where we just rely on folks and hope that they do the right thing, but they are getting that guidance from us on what we would like to see and, and how best to, you know, to, to ensure that we don't end up with, like, a super-spreader type of thing, so.
Well, like a hot dog stand, they buy, you know, they used to have, you know, a jug of mustard, a jug of dill, and do it, but...
Yeah.
I think now you're supposed to give them a package of mustard or ketchup.
Right.
Just little things like that.
Yep.
Right.
Anything else?
Thanks, Casey. Sheriff, anything today?
Good morning. I'll start with the COVID thing for the sheriff's office as well. Casey helped facilitate us getting some training in-house. Brenda and Aaron came in, trained some of us on how to administer and how to do the rapid test, particularly for our staff. So, we're trying to work with them so we can do what we need to, to prevent any type of outbreaks in our, in our facility, particularly in the jail. So, we've, we've had that training and have the, we have, have the tests so that we can do our part to keep all of our inmates safe and, and staff safe as well. So, we do have that. I also want to let the board know that I've, that I do serve on the homelessness task force, along with David's wife, and we've, we're to the place with that task force here where some, some things may start moving pretty, pretty good. I believe Commissioner Dickinson is, is, are you going to start serving on that?
I'm going to start attending meetings just to report, yes.
And we appreciate that because there will be some things coming down in the future that, in the near future, that we believe that we'll need the Board of Commissioners to, to have input on, as well as the Ottawa City Commission on that as well. So, we appreciate the county's involvement in that because it is a, it is a need here in Franklin County that people sometimes will overlook, but, but we do need, we do need that. So, thank you for your willingness to, to go to those meetings as well. And then, this weekend is the twentieth anniversary of 9/11. We've had some, some big things that have changed in our profession as a result of that. Part of that, this board was involved with, and that was our, our new radio system that we, that we got in here a couple of years ago. It's that interoperability piece that came out of after-action reports, and we still receive training on some of the lessons learned from 9/11, and we still pick up on, on things regularly as, as far as how those things, how those things go. So, I do think that unfortunately, sometimes it takes tragic events, but if we can take any of those, look back at them and learn the, learn the lessons that we need to so we can either, we can prevent those and respond better in the future. And I think that that's where we are. I think we have, we've made vast improvements in, in those things, and we will continue to do that. I have been asked by several people in the public if we have any intelligence on, on anything that's going to go on. I can tell you that I've, I do receive briefings, but I've received no specific credible threats for, for Franklin County. I'm sure that there's some out there somewhere for other places, but we have not, we don't have anything here. We, but we always encourage people to be safe and, and vigilant all the time, so. With that said, if the board has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
I noticed down at Legacy Square, the restroom facility there, there's people camping out there at night.
That is correct.
But what do you do when you, you know, find somebody camping out like, like there, or like anywhere?
And we have it not just down at Legacy Square, they're along the river, they're along the, the trail, the rails to trails as well. We check on them to make sure that they're okay, is typically all, all that we have done unless there is an issue. I know that the city's run into some issues with those bathrooms down there, so they do lock them at night now. And I, I don't think that was the original plan, but that is, is what has had to happen as a result of some of the things that are going on. Again, back to the homelessness task force, we're hoping that we can provide a service that will alleviate some of those situations because those are impeding on everyone else in the public being able to use some of those areas for what their intended purpose was, and so, that's part of our, part of our goal there. Thank you.
Paul, anything from FCDC? All right. Public Works, David?
Okay, so, we finished up the dirt work on Georgia Road, south of, of, what is that, Rock Creek. The rain, the holiday vacations kind of slowed us down a little bit, but they're making progress on that. They're adding rock to get that completed and replacing some entrances along the route as well. We're working on the last half-mile of Kingman Road, getting that, that squared away. While these two projects have been going on, we've also been able to make improvements to LeBret Road west of Arkansas. That road had gotten kind of narrow too, and we've been able to widen that out and, and take care of the, the ditches. Let's see, we also completed a ditching project on Alabama north of Hamilton, replaced five entrances and crossroad tubes, hauled rock to six of the nine blade districts, and we're currently working on a washout on Missouri north of Douglas. And here, soon, I believe they called in to locate, yesterday, we're going to be working with the city of Richmond. They, they're going to redo South Street, and we have agreed to do a little work on their behalf. We're going to do some ditching on the south side of South Street for the length of that, well, it's actually a little bit longer, and we're going to install a crossroad tube to one of the residences along that, that route as well, in an effort to help them redo their street. They're going to have Kilo Construction come in and, and mill that out, mill that off and, and put in a, a nice overlay up to, from fifty-nine up to the nursing home, which is one of their most heavily-traveled roads, a lot of people in and out, and that's also probably their biggest employer, so that'll be a nice project. Later on, we've got a drainage project that we're going to do with the city of Rantoul. They're going to do some work, and we're going to, we're going to help them out and do some work adjoining that area that will help both entities. So, we do have some of those types of projects coming up. I know earlier, we, you, you all approved a, getting a vehicle for planning and zoning. The, we were notified by our Ford dealer that the three cabs and chassis that, that we had ordered earlier this year, we were expecting them at the end of this month, maybe early October. I'll be pleasantly surprised if we get them yet in 2021, and it's all due to the chip shortage. We spoke with the, our vendor just yesterday, and he said they're not even communicating with him anymore. So, he's looking for updates to be able to pass along information to us and his other clients, and he's not getting anything from Ford. So, there's, there is no timetable on this, so, again, we'll be happy if they arrive this year, but I, I wouldn't be surprised if it rolls into next year. The, the bodies of those, that work is already underway, and will probably be done well in advance of us receiving the trucks, so that is, that's all I've got.
Commissioners, I'd just like to thank you guys for approving the purchase of the election equipment last week, and let you guys know that next week, we'll be programming ballots for the election, and when they come to do that, they'll be bringing us one set of equipment so that we can... we can do the initial testing on our ballots, and then we'll be getting that set up. So hopefully, people can come in and take a look at it, see what it looks like, so you guys can come in and see what it's going to look like. So we will have one set on site, and we do have our pickup of the old election equipment scheduled for next week, so we can kind of reset the room where all of the election equipment is stored and get it all ready for the new equipment. So that's all starting to happen, so that's exciting for us.
What do you think they're going to do with the old equipment?
They are going to recycle it. So it's outdated equipment, it's not anything that they currently use, and I know, I've heard people say, oh, we send it to other countries and stuff, but we do not. We send it to a recycler, and then they send us the certification that it has been destroyed, so that we have that in hand, partly because the large majority of the equipment we have now was funded through, through a grant. So we have to have that for the grant funding, but also just for a security standpoint.
Don?
After I made that, I just mentioned to Casey this morning that if the county can provide any emergency matter, sanitizers, masks and so forth, that we should try and do that if we can. I know I mentioned the, I mean, I don't think even with a card show, they'll give away a ton of any of that, but I still think we need to have it there and available to people if necessary. I just mentioned like there are three high priority areas that people come in to register, people that come to buy shirts, and people that get door prizes. If we could just do something at those three sites, you're not going to try and do a front gate, or it's impossible, something like that, but at least offer it to, to a good intention, you know.
Last Thursday, that Kansas State Department of Education Secretary was in town, and I did go to that. Actually, it's pretty interesting, the, the direction they're going and the work that Paul and Dr. Cobb's are doing as far as workforce development are pretty much hand-in-hand. Some things that, you know, any job really, minimum, you need a diploma from high school. And so really their goal is, their aim is to hit 95% of the graduation rate. They're not there, but that's where they're heading, and, and they really are moving in that direction. Their goal is to be the best education department in the world, in the world, as far as what they, what's provided to the students and the graduation rate, and it's gone up several points in the last five years, and they're working in that direction. Another thing is that they realize that kids don't just need academics, that when they graduate to, to actually be out, go out and have a job, they need to, to be able to talk in front of people, they need, you know, to have the soft skills, and that is something that they've realized is not just spitting out information, there's a whole lot more available, or that they need to have to be able to go out and be a good worker. They realize that they don't want to just concentrate on kids that are going on, into a four-year college, but also they need to support those kids that might be going to a technical school, to a two-year school, whatever they're going, wherever they're going post-education, or post-graduation, to make sure that those kids have whatever they need. So anyway, it was really, it was really good to realize that we do have good leaders, at least on the state level, in education. Last Wednesday, the city of Ottawa had their regular commission meeting, they had their revenue, revenue neutral hearing, they had their budget hearing, they also got the information. They had just opened their bids for their refinancing and their, and actually the refinance rate came in better than they had start, thought to start with, and so they're going to save over $600,000. The rate was less than 1%, which seems crazy, but that's just where it is right now. Also, they had their land bank hearing, and they have decided that they are going to put all of the rest of the Cove's lots on the market, and they're going to be $10,000 a lot, and the specials will be paid by the city and not by the bid or so. Hopefully that will get a few more of those out on the market. I don't, I was going to look up the date, and I couldn't find it real quick, but I don't think they're going to have until late this month or early next month. And also, they went back, there was four lots that were sold at the first auction, they're going to go ahead and give them that same, they're going to take those specials off so that they're not paying those too. The city of Princeton had their meeting last night. They're still dealing with some water and sewer issues, but as a small community, trying to figure out how to pay for some pretty major expenses. Paul's been helping them, and I think they're going to use some of their stimulus money to at least get an engineering report to see really where they need to go with that, and then see where they need to go from there. Dollar General, if you go, if you've driven down 59 Highway, they've started the dirt work. I think there's some questions as far as the sewer, as far, nobody even knows where it is, so there's going to have to be some work done to figure out how they're going to hook on, and, but hopefully, they're still going to be under, ready to open in, in November. Otherwise, they have their, I think it's the first one they've had since COVID started, they're having a biscuit and gravy breakfast this Saturday at 7:00. So if you need anything else to do this weekend besides the tractor show and everything else that's going on, from 7:00, come to Princeton and have biscuits and gravy, and that's all I got.
What? Hold on, how many times? What I heard is amazing, Dr. Watson's visit on the, from the state, how many of the things he outlined is innovative and forward-looking that the local, that Ottawa's already doing, and has kind of pioneered, so that was great to hear. Anyone else?